Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the Planning Board for Tuesday, March 4th. I'm going to call the meeting to order, just as I do. Important to note Deputy Mayor Yankoff, Chair for this committee, is online. The Manager of Policy, Donna, is online, and Sen, one of our Planning Board members, is also online. So, call the meeting to order any declarations of conflict of interest. Not seeing or hearing any. I need someone to approve our agenda for today. Moved by Jackie, seconded by Counselor Beck. All those in favor of that? Perfect. Adoption from our minutes from our Planning Board meeting on Wednesday, February 12th? Do I have someone that moved by Bobby Kenny, seconded by Lee McDonald? All those in favor? Is there any business arising from those minutes? Not seeing any. Today, we have a lot of reports. All but one are with recommendation to proceed to public consultation, so hopefully we'll be able to navigate through that. Our first report is a proposed housekeeping amendment. Sebastian is going to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. This report, we're requesting to proceed to public meeting to amend sections of the zoning and development bylaw governing delivery of written notices. And these sections are: Section 3.8.3b, dealing with minor variances; 3.9.3b, major variances; 3.10.4a, rezonings; 3.15.4, reconsiderations; and the addition of new definitions. Background: Sections quoted above of the zoning and development bylaw state that before matters regarding minor variances, major variances, rezonings, and reconsiderations can be approved, written notices by ordinary mail explaining the purpose of the respective proposed development must be provided to all affected property owners within 100 meters of the boundaries of the subject lot. Due to the regulation explicitly stating delivered by ordinary mail, our development application process could not be achieved during the four-week Canada Post strike from November 15 to December 16, 2024. During this period, notices stipulated by the bylaw could not be delivered to the affected property owners. Consequently, some development application processes were not, sorry, were placed on hold, resulting in meetings and public consultations being canceled. Legislative requirements: Section 3.10.3 of the zoning and development bylaw stipulates that before amending the regulations of this bylaw, council shall conduct a public meeting to receive the views and opinions of the public. Now, 3 point... Sorry, I'm trying to navigate here. 3.8.3, dealing with minor variances, reads as follows: "Prey- sorry, provide written notices by ordinary mail explaining the purpose of the proposed minor variance to all affected property owners within 100 meters of the subject lot. This will be amended to read, provide written notices by ordinary, sorry, by ordinary mail or delivery by hand, a drop-off delivery, explaining the purpose of the proposed minor variance to all affected property owners within 100 meters of the boundaries of the lot." Section 3.9.3b, dealing with major variances, reads, "Provide written notice by ordinary mail explaining the purpose of the proposed major variance to all affected property owners within 100 meters of the boundaries of the subject lot," which will be amended to read, "Provide written notice by ordinary mail or delivery by hand, drop-off delivery, explaining the purpose of the proposed major variance to all affected property owners within 100 meters of the property boundaries of the subject lot." Section 3.10.4 reads, "Before rezoning is heard at a public meeting, the development officer shall, A, provide written notice by ordinary mail, advise all affected property owners within 100 meters of the boundaries of the subject lot through notification in writing at least seven calendar days prior to the public meeting of the date of the public meeting." That will be amended to read, "Before rezoning is heard at a public meeting, the development officer shall, A, provide written notice by ordinary mail or delivery by hand, drop-off delivery, advising all affected property owners within 100 meters of the boundaries of the subject lot through notification in writing at least seven calendar days prior to the public meeting of the date of the public meeting." Section 3.15.4 reads, "A letter shall be sent by ordinary mail explaining the reconsideration request to all affected property owners within 100 meters of the boundaries of the subject lot identifying the subject lot." And that will be amended to read, "A letter shall be sent by ordinary mail or delivery by hand, drop-off delivery, explaining the reconsideration request to all affected property owners within 100 meters of the boundaries of the subject lot identifying the subject lot." Proposed definitions will include: Ordinary mail means economy mail or regular mail sent through the public postal service and is handled by affixing postage stamps depending on weight, destination, and dropping it into a letter posting box. Delivered by hand. For this purpose means a letter or a package that is delivered by the sender or their representative in such a way that the recipient receives it into their hands or delivered into a mailbox. Drop-off delivery means a method of delivery that involves the sender or their representative taking a package to a specified location. The Planning and Heritage Department requests that Planning Board recommend to council to proceed to public consultation to consider the proposed amendments to the zoning and development bylaw as outlined. Subject to any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Sebastian, are there any questions for Sebastian before I look to push this on to? Do I have someone that's willing to move this to go? I think moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by His Worship, that we go to public consultation, okay? All those in favor? Sen, are you in favor?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Deputy Mayor?
In favor.
Okay, perfect. We'll move that on. Thank you. Okay, the second item for discussion tonight is unaddressed parcels of land, Malpec Road with PID 134957 and 1180348. David is going to present this application, which is still with a recommendation for council to proceed to public consultation.
Okay. Thank you, Chair McCabe. Chair, members of Planning Board. The following application is a request to proceed to public consultation for a rezoning request for the subject properties identified as PID numbers 134957 and 1180348, which lie to on the east side of Malpec Road, north of the Country View Estates subdivision. This is a request to rezone from the R2S to the CDA zone to allow for a new plan of subdivision to be developed across three phases of development that would have approximately 800 dwelling units, commercial development parcels, as well as new public park space. Next slide illustrates the concept plan of subdivision that the developers have put forward. The rezoning request would be intended to facilitate the development of a three-phase plan of subdivision having approximately 800 dwelling units. The subject properties have otherwise been the site of vacant lands within the urban boundary, which have been used for agricultural purposes for many years. The future plan of subdivision would also contain commercial development, which is, I'll just highlight on the screen, these parcels 1, 2, and 3, which would be at the entrances to the plan of subdivision, as well as two proposed points of access onto Malpec Road, one to the north and one to the south shown here, and a proposal that there'd be a future roundabout constructed in the fullness of time at this location. I'll just note that Malpec Road within this area is under the jurisdiction of Provincial Department of Transportation and Infrastructure, or DTI, and is not under the jurisdiction of the city of Charlottetown. As noted, the site consists of two existing lots, which are vacant interior residential lots on the east side of Malpec Road that contain no buildings or structures. They are both located within the low-density single residential R2S zone adjacent to established residential uses primarily to the south. The site is bounded primarily to the north and south by vacant undeveloped residentially-zoned lands and to the west by Malpec Road, beyond which is located the Hidden Valley subdivision that is currently under development. The city of Charlottetown official plan supports mixed forms of housing within existing neighborhoods to allow for housing choice. A variety of housing choices within neighborhoods are important as they provide options for the needs of different people at various stages of their lives. Applicable sections of the OP include Sections 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3, which pertain to the application. Subject property, just an overview of the proposed development. The subject property has opportunity for full development as a complete plan of subdivision, and it would have, it does have direct access to full municipal services, being roads, water, and sewer. Although the subject properties constitute undeveloped greenfield space, due to the location of the site in proximity to existing and ongoing residential development, it is important for the planning process to thoughtfully consider the context of the surrounding uses and seek feedback from those with potential concerns. Planning staff at this point in time are of the opinion that the applicants have provided sufficient information and details such that the rezoning request should proceed to public consultation to gauge the thoughts, opinions, and feedback of council, as well as local residents. So on that note, the Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to council to approve the request to proceed to public consultation, to consider a zoning bylaw amendment, rezoning, to rezone the subject properties identified as PID numbers 134957 and 1180348 from the current low-density residential single R2S zone, and placing them in the comprehensive development area CDA zone to facilitate future development of the combined properties with a new plan of subdivision having approximately 800 dwelling units, commercial development, and new public park space that would be proposed to be built out across three phases of development. So that is a summary of the request, and I'll turn it back to the chair for any questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's the applicant? I was trying to see. It doesn't state his name.
Landmark.
Landmark? Landmark, okay.
Could I ask, Madam Chair?
Absolutely. I was just gonna see.
David, Counselor Beck and I were just looking at the property there, the two PIDs. Acreage, I'm trying to find it in your, he's got it, 160 meters in one part. Is it within 40, 50? Like, look how many lots you had there. Would it be close to 100 acres?
Yeah, through the chair, Mayor Brown. I believe the total area of the combined sites is over 100 acres. I don't have my report in front of me, but that was captured in the planning report. It would, just because it's under two separate parcels, two separate PIDs, as part of the process, they would have to also apply for a lot consolidation before we ever give any approval to a draft plan of subdivision as well, so, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I had a question. I just wondered...
Sir, just, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, the initial, the lower entrance, is that an existing driveway, like, that goes into the farm now, or is that, that is the existing driveway?
Yeah, through the chair, David, there is an existing access there.
Yes, and the upper one would be new.
The upper one would be new, but we do have some comments from DTI essentially saying that they're comfortable with that second access.
And the nice thing is, I'm sure we're gonna hear lots of feedback from the residents and people in the area who'll be able to give us other ideas. Counselor Beck?
Yeah, thank you for that. Through to the, David, Madam Chair, if it's okay. Just two questions. You identified the commercial parts as those blocks earlier that were in purple or whatever. I couldn't see it on my laptop, and I can't see it here. What do the different, like, there's a bluish, a yellow, and a pinkish. What do, can you elaborate what those are?
Probably just the different stages of development.
Are they the phases? Or are they different in terms of what's in each part?
Through the chair, Counselor Beck. Those color codes, the, I'll call it the pink, the turquoise, and the yellow, those are the separate phases of development. So phase one would be pink, phase two is turquoise, and phase three is yellow. So there are some of those green spaces that wouldn't be developed until subsequent phases occur, but the commercial is all entirely in phase one, as the developers have proposed. But that phasing is still subject to possible change and negotiation, but essentially, they've, the phasing, as you see, is a bit dictated by the road network and what makes sense as the roads are built out, so that you can provide for circulation, access and proper circulation as construction's still going on on future road segments. So, they've been a bit strategic in how they've partitioned it across the phases a bit with respect to the road network, so there's still logical flow while subsequent phases have not been built out yet, so.
And because this is just going to public consultation, I'm sure there's gonna be, we'll see this application multiple times again before it comes...
Yeah, I just have some questions right now, though, and they will come out later, I know that, at the public consultation, if we go ahead with that, or if we move.
If we go to the public, yeah, okay, yeah.
Just one thing, is there, those two roads are sufficient egress? Like, they don't, for, and again, I'm just asking, you just have to have two areas, doesn't matter where they are coming off the property?
Yeah, through the chair, Counselor Beck, we understand that they would meet the minimum 60-foot width requirement, like, the minimum that Public Works would require for a two-lane road with additional width for services like sidewalks, buried infrastructure, lighting, all that stuff. At minimum, we would ask for two accesses for a development of this magnitude. Again, we don't have full comments back from all departments at this point, but we have sufficient information to make the request for public meeting, and there'll be more feedback forthcoming, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good. Counselor Beck? Anybody else have any other questions before we put a motion to move this to public consultation? Deputy Mayor Sen, you good?
All good.
Yes, ma'am.
I have someone just moved the motion.
Moved, I'll move it.
Moved it, seconded by Lee. You have a question on the motion, yeah?
Again, David, this is just a question clarification. On the far east side, I believe that is the Confederation Trail?
Through the chair, Your Worship, that's correct, yeah. That is the Confederation Trail to the east of the sites, yeah.
And, question two again, question for clarification. So, you need two entry egress points. They can just be separated from the frontage of the lot? It doesn't have to have something somewhere further in? It's, that's, I'm just trying to figure out, is that planning principles?
Yeah, through the chair, Your Worship, yeah. Again, for a development of this magnitude, in the event that one access was blocked and emergency services had to get into part of the neighborhood, you'd want to have two, at least two principal means of access. And you'll notice on the plan that the, in multiple locations, the developers have left dead-end roads to the north and south, and those are stubs that would be left to potentially provide connectivity for lands north and south that are currently also undeveloped, that may be built out in the fullness of time under future plans of subdivision, so.
that may be built out in the fullness of time under future plans of subdivision, so. But principally, from the highway, from the arterial road, we'd need a minimum of two access points for different reasons, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that, I just thought they had to be at different points, like, maybe on the north side, one on the west side. It doesn't matter, as long as you have two points of entry and egresses. Okay.
Essentially, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion's on the floor. Can we have a vote? Move to public consultation? Sin?
In favor.
And deputy mayor?
In favor.
Okay, unanimously passed, thank you. So the next application, David, you're also going to present on Seven McKinnon Road, PID This is actually the only one that's not with a recommendation for public consultation.
Oh, we're good, yeah, we're good. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, and sorry for the glitch there. The following application is with regard to Seven McKinnon Road, PID 374215. This is a request to rezone the identified subject property from the low-density R2 zone to the medium-density R3 zone, to allow for the development of a seven-unit apartment building on the site. I'll just note for Planning Board, for members who may not have been there in the fall, that this application previously went to the board and was sent to council for a decision and deferred at that point in time back in October, as there was some concerns around access and further comments from city departments, which we now have, so I'll get into that later in the presentation, but just that the board, this might be a bit of deja vu, the board has seen this already. Just to keep going here, the property is located on the north side of McKinnon Road, just west of the intersection with University Avenue, and is located approximately sixty meters from the University of Prince Edward Island campus to the east. It's located, again, within the R2 zone adjacent to and in the vicinity of primarily semi-detached townhouse and apartment unit development. The subject property is currently vacant and contains no buildings or structures. Next slide illustrates the site plan for the proposed apartment building that would be oriented perpendicular to McKinnon Road, with the access shown here to the east of the site, and outdoor surface parking for the apartment units here. Next slide illustrates concept floor plans for the units. As mentioned, there's proposed to be seven units within the building, and basement plan here shows a common, a gem and common space that would be for the use of the residents. Next several slides illustrate the facade and the building scale and massing as developed by the applicant and their architect. The first slide is a view of the building facing to the southeast towards McKinnon Road. Next slide is a view facing northeast, surface parking shown in the foreground, view facing southwest, also towards McKinnon Road, view facing west, view facing north, and a view facing south, again, towards McKinnon Road. So just some background, as I previously noted, on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, City Council approved the request to proceed to public consultation. As per Section 310-4 of the zoning and development bylaw, a notification letter was mailed to all owners within one hundred meters of the subject property on September sixth, twenty twenty-four, to meet the seven-day calendar requirement. Public hearing date was held September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Total of fifty-four letters were sent to residents within the one hundred meter circulation to advise them of the public meeting, to solicit comments and feedback, and to date, there were no written responses that were received. Subsequent to the public meeting, on October first, twenty twenty-four, Planning Board voted seven to one to recommend to City Council that the application be approved based on Planning Staff recommendation. On October the eighth, twenty twenty-four, City Council voted ten to zero to defer making a decision on the application to allow more time for concerns regarding road access and privacy to be addressed. Since the October council meeting, City Fire Department responded also with further feedback on the requirements that the developer would be able to address through a future building and development permit. Next slide, and I won't read it all out for everybody, but this is the Fire Department response. Fire asked that there be a standpipe required for the proposed building, and an additional hydrant at the street required as well. As well, they asked for proper turnaround space for fire vehicles, fire apparatus, and that Fire Department access routes be addressed through the National Building Code, through a future permit. All of these comments from Fire have been shared with the developer, and the developer is confident that they can fulfill conditioned building permit to fulfill the requirements of City Fire in these respects. The next slide provides an overview of the positives of the development, the shortcomings, and also neutral comments. Positives, the rezoning will enable compact form and infill development of medium-density housing to meet future needs. The property is in proximity to complementary and supporting businesses, services, and amenities. The density of the proposed development, being fifty-eight units per hectare, is very close and comparable to existing residential density of sixty-five units per hectare for the neighboring block to the south, which contains a number of existing townhouses. Neutral comment is that the development would require a future building and development permit. And some shortcomings that have been identified are a lack of two access points for the local street, i.e. that McKinnon Road is a dead-end street coming off University Avenue, and that this might create an issue for road access given, to and from the development, given traffic volumes that exist on University Avenue. As well, the proposed development could impact existing privacy that residents have grown accustomed to over time, owing to the fact that the property has existed as an empty lot for some time. Regarding our analysis, official plan section 3.1 states that policy shall be to allow for moderately higher densities in neighborhoods provided it is development at a density that will not adversely affect existing low-density housing. The subject property does not belong to what can be considered a consistent neighborhood block. The existing neighborhood block to the south contains a mix of townhouse and apartment units with an overall density of sixty-five units per hectare, while the proposed density for the subject site development would be fifty-eight units per hectare, which is within approximately ten percent of the background density of the wider neighborhood and area. So to conclude, our recommendation, Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to City Council approve the following rezoning request for Seven McKinnon Road, and that is to amend Appendix G, the zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw, from low-density residential R2 zone to medium-density residential R3 zone for the property located at Seven McKinnon Road, PID number 374215. So as a summary of the application or recommendation, I'll turn it back to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, David. Is there any questions for David on this application? Bobby, go ahead.
Sorry. The last time we looked at this, I think there was a concern that there was no access to the south, beyond McKinnon Road. It only went out to University Avenue, and there was no other access further in. Has that changed any? Was there any suggestions from the city that how that could be resolved, or from the Fire Department?
Through the chair, member Kenny, that hasn't been, that hasn't changed. McKinnon Road is a dead-end road, if you follow it all the way to the west, it deadends. There's really limited opportunity to provide a second access, given the layout of the road network. The Fire Department, and I'll just put it back up on the screen here for everyone's benefit, there were some, a lot of the concerns were with regard to Fire Department requirements for getting emergency vehicles in and out safely in case something ever happened. They have offered some suggestions for how fire protection could be accounted for more properly, and so all of this has been shared with the developer. The developer is amenable to satisfying any requirements the Fire Department has, and these are all things that can be worked out through the permit process, through a conditioned permit. Proper turnaround area can be provided for emergency vehicles, and onsite, any onsite fire protection measures, like standpipe system, and all adjacent to onsite being a new hydrant in the area, all that would be at the cost of the developer if they proceed, but they've indicated that they're open to carrying out these measures if need be, that the Fire Department requires them, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Beck?
Yeah. Thanks for that, Dave. Yeah, I think the project looks great. I've always liked it, and I certainly like what latest renderings as well, too. So that was one of my questions. Just, sorry, but what is a standpipe, first of all?
Through the chair, yeah, standpipe is a private, like, a private Siamese connection that would be on the outside of the building, so it allows the Fire Department, in the absence of there being a hydrant readily available, they can hook up to an exterior pipe on the outside of the building, and there's private pipe supply to supply the fire engine to fight a fire. You see those usually on apartment buildings, larger apartment buildings?
Okay, sorry. Okay. So there, the other hydrant, that would be the developer that would put in the standpipe and the hydrant as well? I think you mentioned that just a minute ago.
Correct, through the chair, correct, and all that would be at the cost of the developer, yeah.
Okay. Just on page twenty-eight, there was some recommendations that came in from, I think it was from Environment Sustainability, possibly. The developer should consider providing a sidewalk, should be, bike parking should be provided, and public access, outdoor bike racks should be. Are those must-dos or just recommendations?
Through the chair, Councilor Beck, those are recommendations, but conceivably, we could condition the development that they have to provide those, but we, I'd have to consult with legal whether we might be on shaky ground there as to whether we can actually compel those matters, because they're not spoken to as hard requirements in the zoning bylaw for this type of development, so.
Yeah. I'd be, I'd be a little, I mean, the sidewalk, maybe, but the other ones, I don't know, I'm not sure. I think it'd be nice, but, that's good, thank you.
Sin or deputy mayor, do you have any questions for the manager?
No, I'm good.
No, we should.
Okay, everybody is good. Your worship, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So David, the standpipe required usually goes for four stories and up, right? So you're requiring this for a three-story because it's a mitigating factor to, you know, suppress a fire without those two access egress, entries or egress? Is that, would that be the Fire Department's reasoning?
Through the chair, your worship, the Fire Department opined that they would consider, in their eyes, they would actually consider this to be a four-story building, given that the first, call it the first story, the first floor is not entirely below grade. This had been a bone of contention between the architect, the applicant, the applicant and their architect, and the Fire Department. Fire Department is, in their opinion, based on their interpretation of the code, that they would consider a four-story building, therefore, that's why they've asked for that. And if, you know, they levy that as a hard requirement, it's something that the developer will have to do, and we'd have to put it as a condition on future permit, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, I was trying to determine whether it was three or four, I know the first level looks like it's.
There's been a difference of opinion there between the applicant and the Fire Department.
Yeah, I guess it's the way you look at it. So David, does it matter how far the building is from an access point? Maybe you can't answer this, maybe this would be something Fire would have to answer, that you do have a standpipe, Fire gets in there, Fire, your fire services, they get inside the building, they connect to the standpipe. But does that help, you know, offset that second, second point of entry or point of exit?
Through the chair, your worship, I'm not sure entirely if you can say that, that that supplants, you know, what you, functionally, what you would have with a second point of access. I think the second point of access is really spoken to in terms of the road network itself, right? That McKinnon Road is a dead-end road.
It's a short road.
And it doesn't loop anywhere, like, you can't, once you get in, Fire's concern was for their equipment to be able to turn around.
Right.
And they've left some, they've recommended, like, the possibility that a chunk of the property can be kinda taken off, and you can create, like, a turnaround at one corner of the property, that that can happen, right? That the fire trucks don't drive down the road and have to back out.
No.
But...
So just, Madam Chair, just two more quick points, Madam Chair, to the manager. It's a short road, great to see it's gonna be three bedrooms, because that is a, you know, lacking in affordable housing or housing in general. So, I know with Alana Court, they built all those apartment buildings down in Alana Court, no sidewalk, no active transportation pathway. Should we not try to, we have no regulations, we have no bylaw in place, a development, development bylaw in place that, I shouldn't say forces, but allows developer to build infrastructure? Can we, can we work with the developer, maybe share it with the city to make that happen? Because with a three-bedroom, you're probably gonna have families moving in here, or moving into the units.
Okay, through the chair, your worship, it's a good question, but I guess the issue is that this is a form of, I'll just put the air photo back up, just to give some context. This is a form of what I would call spot development, so, really, in a practical way, if you're gonna compel them to build a sidewalk, they're only developing along a portion of the frontage of the entire road, so it's not like in a plan of subdivision where it's a bit more of a blank slate, and you can build, that would be, that, I don't know what the costing on that would be, but it might be an unreasonable cost, given the scale of the development, perhaps, but, again, their development is only affecting that limited point of frontage along the entire existing road, so to ask them to build a sidewalk, are you asking it to build it just along their frontage, or beyond the scope of their frontage?
One side.
Exactly. So, I mean, it's something we could certainly put to them, but I don't, I'm not aware we have anything to compel them to.
Again, David, just on this point, the spot development can lead into another spot development on this road, because there is other properties there that could, you know, accommodate such a development. I just wanted to leave that with you, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I would just, maybe just add to that point, something that council could consider in the future is exploring local improvement areas, where those costs could be spread across the respective area, if we were looking at establishing sidewalk along that entire street frontage, where the frontage costs would be shared with the property owners along that area.
Yeah. There is a sidewalk on the east side and west side of University Avenue, going right out to the malls. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, just one thing, I was just looking at the picture there again, the 374, the subject property, and then the one to the west, 374173, is that a road in there that leads back into 374199? Is that a current road there?
Through the chair.
Or is that just a rough road?
No, no. Through the chair, Councilor Beck, I'll just highlight here, my understanding is that McKinnon Road, that this area, this polygonal, I'll call it, or shape, this is all city property, and so is this, right up until you hit that line there, this is private property up here, 374181, but as far as I'm aware, this is technically a road corridor, call it an unimproved street that's owned by the city. Yeah. a road corridor, call it an unimproved street that's owned by the city. Yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. So 374-199 accesses their property? Sorry, I'm just trying to understand that they currently access their property right now through that road?
Yeah. So I would imagine that 374-199 would have a mutual access easement with this property to get on to what is the public right of way here, although it's an unimproved public right of way from, I would call it an unimproved public right of way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions? Not seeing any. So do I have someone to move this? The staff's recommendation is to approve this application moved by Lee to support staff recommendation. Is there someone to second that? Counselor Beck, all those in favor of this property? Deputy Mary Ankaev?
In favor.
And Sen?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The next application is for 171-181 Kensington Road with PIDs 385930, 385948, and 555177. The request, David, I think you're on again for this. I'm all over the, where is this? Yep, the request to recommend again another public consultation. David?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair and members of the board, following application is a request, it's a request to proceed to public consultation, actually, to rezone the identified subject properties from single detached residential R1L to the medium density residential townhouse R-3T zone, and also to change the official plan land use designation from low density to medium density residential to allow for the development of the subject properties with nine townhouse units on the combined site. And I'll just mention that this is a, this is a resubmission that the board may have seen previously in 2024, and I'll get into that in a few moments. The subject properties are located along the west side of Kensington Road at the northwest corner of the intersection with Hemlock Drive and are located approximately 80 meters, 260 feet northwest of the boundaries of the Belvedere Golf Course, which is shown on the zoning map in green here. Subject property highlighted in red here, subject properties, that is. They are located, again, within the single detached residential R1L zone adjacent to and in the vicinity of primarily existing single detached development. Subject properties have historically been developed with single detached dwellings existing on three individual lots. The current concept plan that's been provided to the city would call for nine townhouse units, shown here, that would be arrayed along the frontage onto Kensington Road. I'll just note for planning board's information that these would all be rear-facing. The main driveways, garages, and main entrances would face inward toward the site with a secondary access facing out towards Kensington Road to the south. And there is proposed to be an outdoor public amenity space shown here to the west of the site. The next diagram is the site plan showing the access for the property. The property would have two points of access, one onto Hemlock Drive to the south, the other onto Kensington Road to the east. Snow, seasonal snow storage area is shown in yellow here. Red indicates outdoor fenced garbage and waste disposal area. And the green would be a private parquet or open amenity space for the residents of the development. Next two slides just illustrate some concept renderings, and these may seem reminiscent of a previous submission that the applicants provided to Planning Board and Council last year. So this would be the facades facing east towards Kensington Road. And the next rendering, this would be the inward-facing side of the building facing west into the interior of the site, showing the principal access and garages and driveway parking spaces. So just a overview of the analysis of the application. Some positives, the rezoning would better enable the facilitation of compact urban form and infill development of medium density housing to meet future needs. The property is in proximity to many complementary and supporting businesses, services, and amenities, such as parks, daycares, places of worship, and public transit. Neutral comment would be that the development would require a building and development permit upon, and that should read rezoning approval, not variance approval. And shortcomings are that the proposed development would displace three existing residences in the area. So just to provide some context to this request, and this is for Planning Board's information, a prior townhouse development concept for this site was previously put forward to Planning Board and Council in September 2024. Public meeting was previously held on September 18th to consider the merits of that application. The prior concept called for 12 townhouse units on three blocks that would have no outdoor amenity space as currently proposed. That prior concept plan for 12 townhouse units was denied by council on October the 8th, 2024 by a vote of nine to one and was not recommended for approval by planning staff either, as it was found to exceed what would be considered acceptable maximum density for the combined site, as per section 3.10.5 of the zoning and development bylaw. When an application for rezoning has been lawfully denied, the same or similar application shall not be reheard by council within one year of its rendering a decision unless A, new material facts or evidence not available at the time of the initial order or decision have come to light, or B, a material change of circumstances has occurred since the initial order or decision. In this case, a material change of circumstances has occurred whereby the applicants have modified their design in response to public feedback. The new concept proposes reduced density from the previous concept and inclusion of a new amenity space that was not previously present in the prior design. In addition, the applicants have also applied to address any existing policy concerns with respect to the official plan regarding density by proposing to redesignate the combined site as medium density under the official plan. And this was something that was not previously submitted for in the previous application. Planning staffer have the opinion that the new submission, based on its design and approach, is dissimilar enough from the prior submission that it should be heard by council according to the process prescribed by the zoning and development bylaw for proposed rezonings of private property, and that the exemptions provided with respect to section 3.10.5 of the bylaw can be applied in this case. So on that note, it is the opinion of the Planning and Heritage Department that in accordance with section 3.10.2 amendments to the bylaw on rezoning of the zoning and development bylaw, that the property owner has submitted sufficient information for an evaluation of the zoning, rezoning request to proceed, and that as per the exemption clauses provided under section 3.10.5 of the bylaw, that the new concept for the site can be heard by council owing to the changes that have been made. The Planning and Heritage Department therefore encourages Planning Board to recommend that City Council approve the request to proceed to public consultation regarding the following rezoning and official plan amendment requests, and that is to rezone the subject properties addressed as 171 to 181 Kensington Road, PID numbers 385930, 385948, and 555177, from the single detached residential R-1L zone to the medium density residential townhouse R-3T zone, and to also change the land use designation in the city of Charlottetown official plan from low density residential to medium density residential to facilitate the development of the combined site with a new townhouse development, nine units proposed that would have a common outdoor amenity space to the rear of the property for use by residents. So that is a summary of the request, our recommendation. And I'll turn it back to the chair for any questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for clearly pointing out the reasons why we can reconsider this application when it's different. Are there any questions for David on this specific application? Rosemary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I was surprised to see this application in front of us since we just reviewed it last fall and had a public meeting in September. And there were many residents in attendance at that meeting. So if I understand correctly, the only differences between the application last fall and this one is that we've gone, it's gone from 12 units to nine, and there's an outdoor amenity space. Is that correct?
We'll let David answer that.
Through the chair, Rosemary, that's correct. But in addition to that, they've applied for, to address the policies in the official plan as well. So previously, this was just a rezoning request. We found it didn't meet the intent of the OP because it was too dense. They've lowered the density, they've cut down the number of units by 25%, added an outdoor amenity space. There were a lot of concerns around privacy for those units that would have been at the back, that would have been wedged in where the outdoor space is currently proposed. So they've made some, you could call noticeable changes to the layout and the design, but also they've, in addition to the rezoning, they've also applied to redesignate under the official plan. So where there was previously just one request, there's now two that have been put forward to further address the policy, not just the zoning, but the policy as well. So that is a fundamental difference here in terms of the approach versus previous.
So, Madam Chair, I think we just need to be able to explain that to the residents who are going to come again. It's only, what, six months later? It just kind of sounds, feels like a flip-flop, you know, from one decision to another one. And I'm not sure that the rationale, you're explaining it clearly, David, but it's, yeah, it's just not ideal.
It's a lot sometimes for the residents. Unfortunately, it's the way they have that right within their current bylaws and existing. Jackie?
Thank you. When this application was up last time, did it go to public consultation? And what was the summary of feedback from the public the first time? Was it just concerns around privacy, or were there other concerns brought up at that time as well?
Oh, there were a lot of concerns brought up. There certainly wasn't just privacy. I don't even recall that one. But I think you, planning staff didn't recommend the last application either, did you?
Through the chair, we recommended denial on the previous application. Yep. But further to that, to address Jackie's questions, if I, memory serves me correct, there was concerns around privacy, traffic generation, how do you handle snow storage? How do you handle garbage disposal? And again, well, the privacy one was a big one for the residents that were further west, like kind of around where that little indent is in the property, that there would have been three units wedged into that area. And the developers have now opted to change that and just put an outdoor space with no units. So, yeah.
Not saying that, like, that there won't still be concerns, but at least if this was to go to public consultation, there is a response to all of the concerns from before. Like, if snow storage was a concern, you can say, well, they've put this forward. It wouldn't be a waste of the public's time, I think, at least.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
So I agree with Rosemary. Laurel and I go back to early 2000s, sitting on planning and trying to rejig a decision that was made, but a different decision came later. I think, well, for me, a rezoning is a rezoning. And plainly, that means if you try to rezone a piece of property and you're denied by council, you have to wait 12 months. So to come back with, you know, some language that is more, I think, more planning language than, than your grade six, grade eight language that you'll need to provide an explanation, I think the residents will show up here and say, well, our understanding was, it was turned down, it was, there was a negative recommendation from the planners to not go with it. And now we have a different, different plan looks great. It looks, it really fits in. It's just, I've always been with the mindset, 12 months, you have to wait 12 months because a rezoning is a rezoning. And that's, I agree with Rosemary, because that's the first thing that came to light when I looked at this application. I said, oh, no, we're not back at this again, and it's not 12 months. So I just leave you with the same thoughts that Rosemary left you with. Thank you.
Food for thought when we're doing our zoning and development and stuff. Deputy Mayor, Sen, is there any questions from either of you?
Yes, Madam Chair. As his worship mentioned, regarding the, you know, rezoning, again, the rezoning was rejected. Is there anything in the bylaw that states that, you know, if a piece of property has been rejected for rezoning, you know, it can't be the same application, application on the same property can't be brought before the council or the planning board within 12 months?
That is, that if the same application was presented, it would not be heard for 12 months. What David has indicated in this case, Sen, is that they have modified the application so that it's not considered the same application that was first requested.
But rezoning is never done on a site, it's really done on properties. It's a parcel of land you're requesting to rezone. Now, if the PIDs are the same, then the law still, the bylaw section should still be applied. Am I correct on that, David?
Through the chair, Sen, you're correct. Like, the pit, the pit hasn't changed. It's still the same property it was six or so months ago. The, and I'm not trying to play advocate here for the developer. I think I'm just trying to provide some reasonable advice to the board that they have come in with a design that is different enough. Yes, they're applying for the same rezoning they've applied for before, but in addition to that, they're asking us to also consider redesignating the property as well under the official plan. And that's not something that was previously considered through the old application. So there's remnants of the previous application here, but there's a little bit more that's been added, and there's been modifications made to respond to some of the concerns that the public had. And I would say, just my own professional opinion, that it's perhaps different enough that we should allow them the grace to see if the public responds any differently or not, because they put the time and effort into, to make that pitch. And it's not exactly the same as what was previously presented.
Thank you. Thank you, David. And just to, you know, maybe for my clarification, would it have not made sense to consolidate the property first, you know, generating a new PID, and then put an application with a new design?
Through, through the chair, Sen, yeah, they could have approached it that way and consolidated the properties, but I don't want to speak for them, but I'm a little doubtful that they would have, that that would have made any difference to modifying the general, generally what they want to achieve here in terms of the built format, I would say. Because this site does present some challenges, being a corner lot, around access and the, and the limiting, big limiting factor here is definitely parking, right?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, David. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Sen. Deputy Mayor, do you have anything at this time?
Not really. I think that I'm of the mind that I would, I would see this through to a public consultation and gauge the public's response that way. And I tend to agree with the staff that there is enough of a difference, that it is a different application. So I tend to agree with staff's recommendation on this one, to proceed to public consultation.
Thank you. And that is the recommendation that's on the floor. So I'm going to see if I have anyone to move back, moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Lee, to move this on to public consultation.
I have a question.
Question to the motion, to the motion. Yeah.
So, Madam Chair, we recall a application on Pope Road, and the application was submitted by, I cannot remember who it was, David Wood. And the neighborhood came out and said, no. I think you remember this, Rosemary. Anyways, so the rezoning was rejected. It came back a year later. You, as the counselor from the area, said, hey, this fits. Remember that?
Residents.
Yeah. So that was a year later. So the rezoning went back, and it went through, went through very clearly and supportive by the, by the residents. So I, David, I, you know, I appreciate the argument that you're putting forward, but I think this is setting a precedent. I will not be supporting going to a public consultation because I think that, to me, a rezoning is a rezoning.
Thank you, your worship. So the motion's on the floor right now to support staff's recommendation to go to planning. So why don't we take a vote to see who is in support of moving this to public consultation? of moving this to public consultation? So we have Jackie, Lee, David, Bobby, and Norman. Deputy Mayor?
In favor of public consultation.
In favor. And Sen?
In favor of public consultation, Madam Chair.
In favor. So we have His Worship against, and everyone else in favor. Thank you. And Rosemary against. So His Worship and Rosemary against. Thank you. The next application is for lots 24, 25, 26, Evelyn Street, with PID 117819311782011178219. A request to recommend to council to proceed to public consultation for another rezoning for properties from low-density residential to medium-density residential. And David, I believe you're on for this as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Following application is a request to proceed to public consultation to rezone three identified subject properties known as lots 24, 25, and 26 on Evelyn Street, PID numbers 11781931178201 and 1178219, to rezone each of these properties from the low-density residential single R2S zone to the medium-density residential R3 zone, and also to change the official planned land use designation from low-density to medium-density residential, to allow for development of a four-unit stacked townhouse on each of the three separate lots. Subject properties are located along the north side of Evelyn Street, and are all interior residential lots. Again, all are located within the R2S zone, and are within an approved greenfield subdivision site, which is currently under active development. Subject properties are all currently vacant and contain no buildings or structures. The next three slides are site plans for each of the respective lots to illustrate the proposed building footprints and the layout of each site, also showing parking to the front of each building. This is the site plan for Lot 24, which would be the most westerly of the three, Lot 25, which is the middle lot, and then Lot 26, which is the lot to the east. So that, those are the concept site plans to show what's being proposed for development. And the next slide shows what the buildings would generally look like, using a 3D rendering. So again, these would be stacked town units with four units, one, two, three, and four. Some context to the development in the wider area. Subject properties, again, are vacant lots that form part of what is a greenfield or new subdivision development that is currently still under active construction and expansion at the present time on the basis of prior approvals. All properties within the existing plan of subdivision in this area are currently zoned as R2S, which allows for residential dwellings in the form of single-detached, semi-detached, and duplex dwellings, but does not provide any allowance for stacked townhouse dwellings as proposed. The subject properties are located in relatively close proximity to Norwood Road to the west, and contain primarily single-detached dwellings that have been established for some time. That's the lots that are along Norwood Road. And the subject properties are also located approximately 700 meters to the north of the arterial highway bypass via connection from Norwood Road. Parking spaces for each of the stacked townhouse units are proposed to be located to the front of the respective units facing the street frontage. The proposed structures would meet all setback, lot area, and lot frontage requirements of the R3 zone, based on the concept plans that have been provided. As per Section 3.10.3 of the zoning and development bylaw, before rezoning any parcel of land, council shall conduct a public meeting to receive the views and opinions of the public and the applicant. Council may, for reasons that are in the best interest of the city, reject a proposed rezoning without public notice and without referral to a public meeting. However, if an application goes to a public meeting, council shall determine the disposition of the application, and the applicant may not be allowed to withdraw the application after the public meeting. Planning staff are of the opinion that the project has merit with sufficient information provided to date by the applicant, to allow for consideration of the proposed rezoning and official plan amendment via the public meeting process with council. And to conclude, it is the opinion of the Planning and Heritage Department that in accordance with Section 3.10.2, amendments to the bylaw on rezoning of the zoning and development bylaw, that the property owner has submitted sufficient information for an evaluation of the rezoning request to proceed to public consultation, and therefore the Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend that City Council approve the request to proceed to public consultation regarding the following rezoning and official plan amendment requests, and that is to rezone the subject properties identified as lots 24, 25, and 26 on Evelyn Street, PID numbers 11781931178201 and 1178219, from the low-density residential single R2S zone to the medium-density residential R3 zone, and to also change land use designation in the city of Charlottetown official plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential to facilitate the development of each of the three lots with a four-unit building, i.e. stacked townhouse dwellings. So that is summary of the request and our recommendation. I'll turn it back to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. David, this was a fairly new subdivision, right? It's not been that long since that land, I recall, started being, I'm just wondering, like, when they bought this land and they had it zoned, the R2S zone, was that what they had applied for initially? Is that why, or was that because that was part of the official plan for East Royalty? Like, I find, I just feel like people buy these places, they're zoned, they get them zoned a certain way, and then short time after, they're coming back looking to... Well, but it's just, you know, I don't know. I don't think it's been that long since this subdivision even started. So why wouldn't they just have applied? It's not, we've been dealing with R3s and people wanting more density for the last, since I started council eight years ago, six years ago. Why not just do it then? Why not rezone the whole subdivision for that, rather than have to keep coming back and, like you said, putting people through these public meetings continuously?
Through the chair, to address your questions. I think at the time that this, this is a more recent plan of subdivision. It's still being built out. There's still a number of vacant properties on it. I think at the time that it was approved, the intent was, you know, these are the type of residential uses that we're generally going to build, because that's what the market wants. And now, you know, they've realized that we could build more, we could get maybe, you know, do more with what we have, and that's why they've come in with this application to, you know, up the density, up the, up the upper limit of density just a little bit for these three lots. And the lots are large enough to accommodate. I think in the context of the entire plan of subdivision, these lots have just a little bit more frontage, perhaps a little bit more lot area that you can actually pull this off versus...
All through East Royalty, the stacked townhouses, like, they're there. So that's why I don't understand why they wouldn't have just zoned for that initially, versus having to come back and do it all, you know?
I can't say I wasn't here.
No, and I, I'm just, that'll be a question maybe for public meeting time. Anyway, are there any other questions on this application? Moved. Deputy Mayor or Sen, do you have any questions on this application before we move it on?
No questions.
No questions for me.
Thank you. So it's been moved by His Worship with support to go to public, seconded by Bobby Kenny. Aldo's in favor. Everybody's in favor. Sen, are you in favor?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor?
In favor.
Thank you very much. So our final application for the evening, Laurel gets a little, David gets a little break, is to, there's an unaddressed parcel of land, Lot 5, St. Martha's Court, with the PID 390740. Laurel is going to recommend to council to proceed to public consultation for a development concept plan. Laurel.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. Point of clarification, the PID is listed as 390740. However, on our GIS, it's showing up as 1176502, and we've consulted with the GeoLink, but that PID doesn't come up with any property information. So we have to clarify which PID it is. It's not clear with the provincial government right now which one it is. So that PID, before we go to public consultation, if we choose to go, may change to the 1176502, because I suspect that that may be a newly assigned PID if the ownership of the parcels changed recently.
Just, just in a point of order. So does this cause any issues if someone wishes to appeal this?
No. Through the chair, Your Worship, it won't, because I'm, I'm making a point of clarification right now. And prior to going to public notification, we'll, we'll ensure which PID is correct. So it'll go out in the notification letter if we choose to send it through to public consultation. So, moving forward, this is an application for a request to proceed to public consultation for approval of a development concept plan for Lot 2019-5, PID number 390740 on St. Martha's Court. It's a request to construct two 82-unit, six-story apartment buildings for a total density of 164 units on the site. And this is the subject property right here. Development concept, or the context, it's, the subject property is located on the south side of St. Martha's Court, adjacent to the Confederation Trail, and that's in Phase 3, a future phase of the original development concept plan for St. Martha's Court. This was designated in the original concept plan. Subject property, it's bound to the north and west by the Confederation Trail and additional zone land CDA owned by St. Dunstons. So right here is St. Dunstons lands and the Confederation Trail, and to the south by CDA zone land, which is approved for multi-unit development through a concept plan. You'll remember these lands, a couple years ago, also went through for concept approval. To the east by CDA zone land containing multi-unit development and Mount Edward Road further east. So right here is multi-unit development on St. Martha's Court, and then we have Mount Edward Road. So some history on the property. You'll remember probably on November 13th, 2018, Charlottetown City Council passed a resolution to allow 143 dwelling units on four of the five vacant properties proposed to be subdivided on St. Martha's Court. And the original resolution of council only addressed the density for Phase 1 and 2 of the development, and therefore required Phase 3 to proceed through concept plan approval at a future date. This is Phase 3, and this was Phase 1 and 2. And the concept plan for Lot 2019-5 will outline the density site layout and building form for the site. So I've listed the proposed density on the side for each lot that was approved through the original first two phases of the concept plan. So legislative requirements, the process outlined in the zoning and development bylaw for adoption of a development concept plan follows the same process as a rezoning application. And once ministerial approval is granted for a development concept plan, a development agreement is entered into by the property owner, and the development concept plan forms part of a development agreement which is registered on title. So the total acreage for Lot 2019-5, the site, which is right here, is 2.83 acres, 123,095 square feet, with a total proposed density of 164 units. The total acreage for Phase 1 and 2, containing the first four lots of the concept plan for St. Martha's Court, was 5.05 acres with a proposed density of 143 units. So if a density calculation is applied to the R4 zone, which is the highest density residential zone in the bylaw, the lot area requirement would be 1,507 square feet per unit. This would allow a density of 81 units. The developer is proposing underground parking, therefore a 20% density bonus would allow a total of 97 units in the R4 zone. So notwithstanding, it should be noted that in the CDA zone, it follows the principles that are more in line with Form Based Code, and therefore there are no specific lot area requirements in the CDA zone. I'm not sure if you're all familiar with Form Based Code, but Form Based Code typically doesn't designate specific lot areas. It outlines specific setbacks and requirements for design for buildings. So, I'm just going to flip to the elevations for the proposed building. Density is approved through concept plan approval, subject to Section 44.2.4 of the bylaw, which considers the quality of architectural design, compatibility with adjacent development, population density, servicing, and landscaped areas, to name a few, within the CDA zone. Staff circulated the proposed concept plan to city departments for comment, and the utility department has indicated that the area has sufficient capacity. However, they will require a site servicing plan prior to any construction commencing. Public Works has indicated that even though this development was included in the West Royalty Traffic Plan, Master Plan, the assumed unit count for the residential developments in this area, in the traffic master plan, were quite a bit lower than what is currently being proposed with an additional 164 units. The study assumed 136 apartment units and seven townhome units, as well as access points seem to have changed with the proposed development and the interconnections on St. Martha's Court. So therefore, prior to the application advancing to public consultation, a traffic impact study will be required. The concept plan has been circulated to the fire department, and staff are still awaiting comments. Staff will update the board as information becomes available. So staff have examined the official plan, and there are various sections that support higher density, especially in key reurbanization areas. And the official plan also supports mixed forms of housing within existing neighborhoods to allow for housing choices. Housing choices within neighborhoods are important, as they provide housing variety for people at various stages of their lives, and I've included sections of the official plan in the report for your review. Specifically, Section 3.6, concept plans of the official plan, talks about the Charlottetown Mall area as a key reurbanization area, where commercial services and higher density development may become established. The proposal is located within walking distance to bus routes, the Confederation Trail, shopping, and amenities. And in planning practice, when assessing locations that are appropriate for residential uses, it's appropriate to locate residential dwellings in close, close to amenities, such as transit, parkland, schools, and within walkable neighborhoods. St. Martha's Court is in close proximity to all of these uses, and it's also connected to the Confederation Trail. The city is currently undergoing an official plan review, and this area of the city has been identified, identified as a major growth node for planning, by the planning consultants. And this recommendation is based on many factors, such as location to services, amenities, transit, appropriate road network, and availability of land to accommodate density. The draft official plan describes nodes typically as intersections of two or more corridors, and these major intersections have a significant impact on the image and perception of the city as they are often prominent gateways. These areas are also the busiest locations in the city outside of the downtown, and can accommodate a wider variety of uses and higher density in these corridors. So nodes are some of the most important, most appropriate sites for the highest densities in Charlottetown due to their access to transportation, infrastructure, and high volumes of visitors. So, from a planning perspective, a variety of housing choices is important to be located within service neighborhoods. Charlottetown's low vacancy rate has presented challenges for people trying to access housing within the city in fully serviced desirable neighborhoods where they are able to access amenities. In addition, density and housing variety is sustainable. It allows for better use of services that are already available. It decreases urban sprawl, which is an outcome of approval of signal, single-detached subdivisions. And in terms of land use, in the official plan, this area of the city was identified as an area of higher density, and that's in the actual official plan that we're working off of now. So, recommendation, planning staff are recommending, the planning board recommended council to proceed to public consultation for a request to approve a development concept plan for Lot 2019-5, PID 390740 on the St. Martha's Court, on St. Martha's Court in the comprehensive development area zone, in order to facilitate future development of the site with two 82-unit apartment buildings with a total density of 164 units. Prior to public consultation, we are also recommending that... Prior to public consultation, we are also recommending that the developer provide a traffic impact study for the proposed development as per Public Works' request. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Laurel. Again, this is to go to public consultation, but are there any questions on the specific application with the staff's recommendation? Rosemary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering if we could clarify, how many units are currently there from Phases 1 and 2?
143 units.
And how many buildings are they in, Laurel? How many buildings are currently there?
I think there's, yeah, there's, one site, Lot 2019-1, I believe, has two buildings, and then we did another building, we did an amendment last fall, I forget which lot it was, you'll have to excuse me, but it was, that amendment was to transfer some units from one building to the other, so there are a couple of lots that do have two buildings, but if you go back to the slide, this is the allowable density calculation, so this hasn't changed the unit count.
Okay, thank you. It'll be interesting to see the, the report from the traffic study because when you drive by there, there's a lot of apartments in there and must be a lot of traffic. I know that you mentioned Phases 1 and 2 is on 2.83 acres, no, pardon me, 5.4 acres for Phases 1 and 2, and then this is 2.83, I think you said, Laurel?
Yes, through the chair, yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
So, if I can clarify, the traffic study, the West Royalty Master Plan traffic study, when that was done, it considered the development density in this area, what's actually shown on this slide, so for 143 units, that's why Public Works is requiring an additional traffic study because this has increased as well as there's other, other developments in the, the general neighborhood that has also increased, and it's also been designated as a, a major node in the new official plan if that does get accepted, so I think we will be looking at quite a bit more density in that area.
I'll move it, Madam Chair. I'd just like to put the resolution before.
Moved by His Worship, seconded by Lee McDonald.
Can I speak to the resolution?
Yes, you can.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So totals, there will be 307 units, and I know when we did the West Royalty traffic study, we had the meeting down at the Confederation Center, and as Laurel said, it did not include this, this phase, you don't include it, the 143 that's there now. But there is a proposal from the SDU Board of Governors to develop the land of the west in order to connect with Babano Avenue or Babano Drive, so that is all part of the plan, it's just when the SDU Board of Governors will, will forward it. So, when you talk about impact on the, on mounted road, because it's not, I don't think it's been identified as one of our corridors in the upland planning study or O2, but it is a corridor, I think the traffic is not backed up the way you think it is, Rosemary. I've driven by there many times, and I'm still waiting to see a queue of cars waiting to get out of that, that development, but when the development of the roadway, the road system on the SDU Board of Governors to the west develops, that will start to channel some of that traffic off to Mall Pack Road, and that's why I'm moving this to go to a public consultation because I'll be interested, it'll be interesting to get the feedback from all interested persons and parties. Thank you.
Sen, Deputy Mayor, do you have any questions on the resolution to go to the public consultation?
No, I'm good.
No question.
Thank you, Counselor McCabe.
Not seeing any more questions. We take a vote to move this to public consultation. In favor?
In favor, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Sen.
In favor, Madam Chair.
unanimous to move to public consultation. Thank you. Is there any introduction to new business? And just before we close, I, it's, I'd like to take a minute to thank Rosemary. Rosemary has indicated that she will be completing her term on our Planning Board at the end of March. She's been with us for six years. She's been valuable to give us great input and information to help us plan, make Charlottetown a well-planned city. So, Rosemary, thank you very much for your time, and we wish you all the best.
And, Madam Chair, if I could say one thing, Rosemary and I met at the farmer's market back in the fall of 2018, and she said, I'm interested in joining the Planning Board, and she stuck with us for six years. Can you imagine that, Madam Chair? Six years she stayed with us.
As a volunteer. She's a great lady.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Enjoy your next chapter, Rosemary. Thank you. So now I just need someone to, motion to adjourn. Lee McDonald, seconded by Bob Kenny. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Lana and Sen.
Thank you, Madam Chair.